Good morning. Welcome you to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 6, 2023. If you can, please stand and say a pledge to the, uh, pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I continue, um, this past week, uh, we lost a very, um, close friend to Blue Earth County, Commissioner Blair Nelson of Wasika County, passed away suddenly. If we could just give a few seconds of silence for Blair and his family. Thank you very much. Uh, we go on to the agenda review, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move.
Second?
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? All right. We have, um, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service land acuse- acquisition. I, you know, my, my lips.
Good morning.
Could you please state your name and, uh?
Ethan Moore, Realty Specialist with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, National Wildlife Refuge System.
Go ahead.
And, uh, we're just here basically to let the county know that we are in the process of acquiring about a hundred and fifty-five point six acres in Lincoln Township, uh, for, uh, in fee title, and then it would be restored into, uh, prairie, uh, prairie wetlands and be open eventually to public hunting, um, once complete. And we're just asking that the county certify that we came and let you know that we were doing this and, um, so that we can proceed with our process to the state.
How long is that process gonna take before, you know?
Uh, we're hoping.
It can turn into like, uh, hunting and stuff like that?
Um, usually, it's, it's usually open technically upon acquisition, although I don't know, my, our biologist is here, Mike, do you know how long it would take probably before it'd be like fully restored?
It would probably be throughout this year and next, and then the restoration will be underway at fall if there's.
Oh.
So probably two years.
Okay. All right. So I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mark?
I'll second it.
And a second from Addy. Um, any discussion?
Nope. Looks like a nice project, thank you.
Looks like a positive for Blue Earth County. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then we got drainage. Craig?
Ryan's first here. We get both of them.
Right.
Oh, right. What a deal.
Morning, Dave.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll start off with County Ditch One. We will be setting the hearing date. Uh, Blue Earth County Ditch One watershed is approximately two thousand five hundred and seventy-two acres in size and is predominantly located in McPherson Township. Uh, drainage staff were performing scheduled inspections of the open ditch when many repairs were noticed. Blue Earth County Drainage Staff consulted with engineer, Mr. Chuck Brandle from ISG to develop a repair report. The repair report was developed using drainage staff input as well as landowner engineering survey recommendations. Following an informational meeting held in April twenty-third, drainage management staff were asked to move forward with the repair report. Said report also included water quality features which would be installed as grant funding for those become available. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority requested drainage authority set County Ditch One approved the findings order set in the hearing date for July eleventh, 2023.
So moved.
Second? Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes.
Sorry, a rough throat this morning here. Next one is County Ditch One. It's a, uh, viewers correction of benefits. A correction for the benefits and damages listed for County Ditch One was prepared by the same viewing staff that completed the redetermination of benefits in 2007. The correction of the viewers' report involves a small area of buffer near the outlet of County Ditch One Public Drainage System involving Mr. John Preston, property R forty-six, twenty oh four, three hundred zero zero three, section four, Mito Township. The lead viewer for the 2007 redetermination of benefits draft a memo explaining the correction and their recommendation on how to proceed to pay for buffer damages to Mr. Preston's We request the County Ditch One Drainage Authority approve of the correction and recommendation. Order the County Ditch One viewers' report be updated and include this correction for future, future usage and that Mr. Preston be paid one thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for the buffer area damage.
I'll move approval.
Second? Got a motion from Kip, second from Kevin. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Was this the one that came out of that informational meeting that he was asking us about his buffer not ever getting paid?
Correct. Yep. Yep. And this other one that I'll explain is exactly the same thing.
Yeah, kinda same thing. They just more of a, the rate at the outlet, so it's always that. Yeah.
Are they in or are they out?
Sure.
Type thing, so.
Good one. I know it's a long time later, but at least.
More catching that, right.
Fixed it, yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
My only comment.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? The passes. Go ahead.
My final one for me is County Ditch Twenty-Six, viewers' correction of benefits and damages. A correction for the benefits and damages listing for County Ditch Twenty-Six was prepared by the same viewing staff that completed the redetermination of benefits in 2019. The correction of viewers' report involves a small area of buffer near the outlet of County Ditch Twenty-Six Public Drainage System involving Mr. James John Hanneman's property, R forty-five, fifteen oh nine, four hundred, zero two zero, section nine, McPherson Township. The lead viewer for the 2019 redetermination of benefits drafted a memo explaining the correction and the recommendation of how to proceed and pay for buffer damages to Mr. Hanneman's property. We request that the County Ditch Twenty-Six Drainage Authority approve the correction and recommendation. Order the Twenty-Six viewers' report count, excuse me, county ditch Twenty-Six viewers' report be updated to include this correction for future usage and that Mr. Hanneman, he paid the five dollars for the buffer area damages to his property.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You gotta explain the five dollars to me.
Yeah, yes. So it's, it's an extremely small portion that actually affects his property that's not, uh, tillable. So he's just got a tiny little piece that's involved right at the outlet and even a smaller piece that involves non, non-tillable.
Or it's not, and you're not, not your average buffer strip.
Correct.
Or that outlet fee again.
Yep, and I reached out to him and explained this long before I, I brought this to the board, so he understands. It's not insulting, it's, it's what it is.
Yeah, but at least it's recorded properly.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, I understand all the recording and stuff like that, but sometimes if you can just take a five dollar bill out of your pocket instead of going through all the, it costs a lot more in time and paperwork than it costs to fix it, but. I agree. But you know what? It's gotta be fixed. It's, it's, we have to do it. Yep. Uh, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? The passes. And Judicial Ditch Fifteen?
Yep. Um, hurt, Blue Earth County Judicial Ditch Fifteen watershed is approximately two thousand nine hundred acres in size and located in Lincoln Township. A petition for improvement was received on May first, 2023. Drainage Authority Attorney Kale Van Birgen of Rankin noonan received the petition and found it to be adequate. Minnesota statute one oh three E point two four one subdivision one requires the engineer be appointed by order of the drainage authority. At today's meeting, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority will be requesting an order to appoint Charles J. Brandle of ISG to prepare a preliminary survey report in accordance with Minnesota statute one oh three E point two four one. Also, this is going to, the petition requests of several maintenance for branches and laterals being replaced with a new tile, uh, so we will also be asking for the Blue Earth County Authority to order redetermination of benefits as part of the improvement process.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes. Good. Thank you very much, folks.
Thanks, you gentlemen.
Have a great day. Looks like a nice day out.
See you this afternoon.
See you this afternoon.
See you this afternoon.
Three o'clock. And now we got Public Works, Ryan.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Morning, Ryan.
Got a handful of action items and quite a few informational updates for the board and discussion matters, so with that, we'll jump right in. First action item is consideration of an updated bridge replacement resolution. As you know, we update this every year or two, and the resolution shows bridges that have been rem, well, it doesn't show the bridges that have been removed, we've taken off previously funded projects and adds new bridges on that are, uh, at or near eligibility for replacement for bridge funding, uh, and ones that are deficient and in need of evaluation. I think one thing I'd point out to the county board is that the total is nearly twenty-seven million dollars. Historically, we've been, uh, usually about a twenty million dollar resolution. This goes to show that twenty-five plus percent inflation that we've seen in bridges over recent years, uh, so this is really reflective of that. I can't say that I think we added seven million dollars more of bridges, it's just that the price of bridges has gone up dramatically. So with that, I would request approval of the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Passes. Go ahead.
The second resolution included in the board packet is a resolution authorizing the county and the engineer and the county attorney to acquire right-of-way for County State Highway eleven, including the use of eminent domain if necessary for Cassau eleven from the west county line to Cassau six. Jack is getting ready to start acquiring right-of-way on this project as the design has evolved, so with that, I would request approval of said resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Opposed, the same? Passes.
Thank you. And that, that's it for my action items, so the rest are informational item updates. I'll run through project updates and then the handout that you're receiving is a legislative update, and I thought I'd walk through some of the things as they, the, the items that were included in the most recent bills as they relate to transportation. So for our construction and project development, County State Highway sixteen from La Sura River to Cassau ninety, construction is underway. The contractor began the operations at the top of the hill, which was just a little bit south of the midpoint of the project. They're working to the northern extents of the project, fully reconstructing and replacing centerline pipe crossings. The southern extents of the projects may look like nothing's happening, and, and that's for a reason. The contractor left the pavement intact on the southern extent of the project because of the high number of residences, so they wanted to ensure people could get in and out as long as possible. So once the north end starts shaping up, then they'll flop and come back and start reconstructing the south end of the project. So that's moving along well. Cassau thirteen from one sixty-nine to one is scheduled to be bid yet this year. We are working on finalizing the right-of-way acquisition for three remaining parcels, so Jack's chasing those down, and the plans have been approved, so really it's bidding to be determined. We have spoken with several area large contractors who said there is appetite for bidding this yet this year. They would even like an opportunity to have a project where they may be able to work on some elements yet this fall. So there is opportunity, uh, and then also to get a bridge contractor in early to perhaps start the bridge replacement earlier on in the winter or spring, late winter, early spring. So, we're gonna keep pushing that project forward and try to get it out to bid with the work, uh, really set to happen in 2024 unless the contractor had an itch to start a small portion of it. Cassau twenty-six from fifty-seven to twenty, Minnesota Highway twenty-two, the product, pre-construction meeting is scheduled for tomorrow. Project start date is targeted for mid-June when the materials for the project are anticipated for arrival. Cassau eleven from the west county line to Cassau six, the one we just approved, the resolution for right-of-way on. We are having a project open house meeting tonight from four to six P.M. at the Public Works Department, so I would invite the Commissioners to that meeting if you're available. And Victory Drive, County State Highway eighty-two from south Hoffman Road to Fair Street. We've been working through design issues, moving toward the thirty percent layout, anticipate seeing that in coming weeks. We contracted for televising of the storms to remain to ensure that it was in adequate condition so that we could continue to discharge our stormwater drainage into it without any significant repairs, and it looks to be in fair condition to where we can continue to utilize it, so not having to replace that is, is a good thing. And then, uh, we also contracted ground penetrating radar, so it's actually a truck with a radar unit and it penetrates into the ground, and based on the frequencies it receives back, it can actually tell you the pavement structure that's in place. And the reason we did that is because there's underlying concrete pavement out there of what used to be old Highway twenty-two, and, um, so we have to identify the extents of where the concrete pavement is at and specify that as a separate removal item, at least quantify that for the contractor.
That's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah, they can actually find the dowel bars in the concrete pavement, I mean, so it's pretty impressive technology when you need to use it. Uh, the Cassau fifteen bridge, plans are approved. Bids are scheduled to be opened June fourteenth for July eleventh county board consideration. And then we still have Cassau ten and seventy-two in Vernon Center. The legislature did approve the verbiage revisions for the city's funding to be used in accordance with their revised project sculpt, so that project is moving forward. The city plans to open bids on June thirtieth and then submit their documents, approve it at the city level and submit their documents to PFA for approval. They're hoping to get approval that can begin more, probably in mid-August, uh, for their contract start date. So unfortunately, they won't be getting a lot done this year necessarily. Uh, the majority of the work's gonna have to happen in 2024, including the reconstruction of Cassau ten through town. As I've spoken with Commissioner Pap, that will create some hardships with thirteen being closed. Um, however, it's, it's unfortunate, we tried to work around it to the best of our abilities, but both of these projects just kind of ran into delays, but I think when we looked at different detours and, and trip to, to and from, uh, trips, we're, we're gonna try to minimize those impacts to the extent it's possible, but there will be inevitably some complaints about the fact that two roads in the region are both closed currently. The Cassau ten portion, the city is striving to only have that closed, um, from mid-June through early August is their objective, so that they can try to have it closed while schools are out session and hopefully have that city piece reopened by late August. Our maintenance crews have been very busy. During the month of May, they finished washing bridge decks, sweeping curb and gutter areas. The excavator and backhoe have been tremendously busy repairing tiles, intakes and culverts due to the high spring rainfall, uh, that manifested problems all around the county, and I know our, our maintenance supervisors have been running around trying to problem solve, and a lot of that is, uh, first come and due in determination, is it really an issue with the county's drainage infrastructure, is it a private drainage issue, and so that takes a lot of problem solving and time put into that, so I do appreciate all their efforts. We've also been cleaning ditches on Cassau four and sixteen. Crack sealing roads that are scheduled for seal coating, the dura-patcher machine has been incredibly busy, as you know, this was a terrible winter for potholes with the number of freeze thaw cycles and how it timed out with, uh, the snowfall events as well, it seemed to penetrate all of those patches and pop all of them loose. Uh, so the dura-patcher is the well above average quantity repairing potholes from this winter. We've also been hauling gravel from stock pits to stockpiles around our shops, grading roads when the moisture conditions are right. We began mowing out the shoulders and patching roads, will begin in the next few weeks, getting the distributor truck and summer equipment ready for maintenance operations, and then last but not least, the park staff have been really busy as well, preparing for the governor's fishing opener out at Bray Park, as well as completing the Bray Park Beach Bath House, which is now open. So they'll be transitioning to the, we've seen the notice that the playground equipment for the Bray Park Beach is going to be replaced as we had budgeted for and received the DNR grant for the fifty percent match, so that work will begin this summer as well. The IIJA Carbon Reduction Grant application, we discussed a couple of different alternatives, um, in previous months. The District Seven County Engineers submitted an application to purchase thirteen EV pickups, and so each county would get an EV pickup for their public works fleet, and that's an eighty percent funding match for the purchase price of the pickup, so that, uh, that, that's a significant portion. Obviously, they're, they're fairly expensive pieces of equipment, but I think it's a fairly inexpensive way for twenty percent cost of that truck for us to get into trying out an EV truck within our fleets and see how, how it fits into our operation and our duty cycles. So that application was submitted. I just heard from my colleague in Cottonwood County, the two of us were kind of leading the charge on submitting this application, that it sounds like it's going to be approved, so we're excited for that. That will take a minor, uh, budget revision for that small portion of the pickup. However, uh, we're gonna be working on specifying that and getting bids prepared for, uh, that federal grant, so that, that's the use of the federal IIJA carbon reduction money.
So since we know that, uh, the new Public Works building's gonna be at least a couple of years out, are we thinking about throwing in a charging unit in the, uh, Public Works?
I, we've talked for sure about at least setting up the infrastructure so that we would have, within the building, we would have the, the conduits and, and some of the runs necessary that we could install charging units. We'd have to retrofit one into the existing building, then I would hope we could just take that kind of home charter unit and move it over to the new building and have that set up. But yeah, if we, if we look at growing the fleet, um, you know, maybe at some point in time when we see the heavier pieces of equipment, I think that's quite a ways out yet, so. But yeah, we definitely have had discussions about the new Public Works facility being equipped so that it at least could facilitate an EV fleet, even though we're not there yet.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that would, I mean, require a level two or a level three, um, because it certainly could charge it up overnight.
That, I think, was our intent, as long as this isn't a vehicle that's going home with somebody.
A level two charge would be significant with, with that.
Yep.
So, okay.
Legislatively, uh, the handout I provided was prepared by our lobbyist, Emily Murray, with the Association of Minnesota Counties, but I just thought that would be a good recap, um, so that you, the board would have record and could visualize the things that I'm gonna cover. The 2023 legislative session overall was fairly good for transportation funding. We're still waiting to see better estimates of what our actual County State Highway distribution will be for Blue Earth County, but I wanted to just recap some of the key, um, items that were approved in this session. And if the board has seen a lot of this already too, I'd be more than happy to, uh, speed through it, but I'll, I'll just kind of hit on some of the highlights. The tab, the vehicle tab fees were increased for vehicle registrations from one point five four percent to one point five seven five percent, and the depreciation cycle was changed with all of the revenue going into the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund. So for the fiscal year 2024, cassa total bucket will increase about sixteen point seven five million dollars. Um, we get a little, forget the percent, about one point six percent of the total cassa bucket, if I remember correctly, between all eighty-seven counties. The motor vehicle sales tax increased from six point five percent to six point eight seven five percent after July first, with sixty percent going to the HUTDF and forty percent to transit. The estimated cassa fiscal year increase will be about eight point five million. A metropolitan area sales tax was imposed at three quarters of a percent with eighty-three percent of it going to Metro Transit and seventeen percent to the seven metro counties for, uh, specified uses. So transit, I'll will say was the biggest winner, uh, for sure, with respect to the, the revenue increases.
Now, would you know if that, would that affect us down here with like Vine and?
That, that's for the metropolitan county only, so it's collected and distributed within the seven county metro.
Okay, so we wouldn't see nothing on that?
Nope. So the only way you're gonna see it is if you go up to the cities and spend money up there, so I would encourage you to spend your money here instead.
[laughing]
On our sales tax.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the dedication of the auto parts sales tax is something we've been working on for quite some time, so it's an existing tax. We've just tried to, um, change the distribution so that all of it goes to the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund or, or transportation instead of, uh, portions of going back into the general fund. So that will be staged to fully dedicate, um, through fiscal year thirty, thirty-three, so it's a rather slow distribution change, but they had to work that through their budget. Creation of a transportation advancement account, um, the, the transportation advancement account kind of collects some of the other revenue increases and then distributes them of that transportation advancement account. Ten percent total will go to County State Highway's, and it's estimated the fiscal year 2024 increase will only be one point one million, however, it's estimated that by fiscal year 2027, that'll rise to nine point two million dollars. There was also a delivery fee imposed for fifty cents for orders over a hundred dollars for retail delivery. The fee proceeds will be deposited into that transportation advancement account I just discussed. Indexing of the motor vehicle sales tax was passed, and that one came a little bit out of left field, and frankly, that's something we've been advocating for, um, because the, the last increase was in 2008 for the motor vehicle, um, fuel sales tax, and that is, that and tab fees really are the bread and butter for local transportation as far as how we fund it. And we've fallen dramatically behind with the purchasing power of, of what the gas tax was, so this at least helps us to not fall behind. It's not gonna get us ahead, it's only gonna help us to not fall as far behind. Um, and it's capped, I believe, yes, I've got it, that the tax indexing is tied to the construction cost index and must not exceed three percent per year, so it, it may not even fully keep up with cost increases, but it's a tremendous step in the right direction, and frankly, it, we were very surprised when it came and, and was introduced within the last few weeks of the legislative session. Um, it's expected to increase the fuel tax by five cents by fiscal year 2027. It's estimated to the fiscal year 2024 cassa increase of eleven point eight million and will rise to thirty-seven point nine million by fiscal year 2027. So that one is, is really huge for us. It'd be really helpful. Additionally, there was bonding bill for transportation, included twelve million dollars for the Board of Water Soil Resources for the local road wetland replacement program. I know Vance knows this for sure, but, um, for the rest of the board, this is the bank that we use to purchase wetland credits, um, so when we reconstruct a project, if we have to disturb a wetland, Bowser actually has to mitigate them statutorily, and so they do the two-to-one replacement and banking, so this funds Bowser purchasing land and constructing new wetlands to use and develop credits for us to mitigate and offset impacts that are associated with transportation and safety improvement projects. So that's something that's huge. We, we're still pushing to try to get that to just be a routine part of Bowser's budget instead of a bonding item, uh, but that's a great step in the right direction to fully fund it for, for a, a turn. Local road improvement program, which the board may be familiar with, uh, that was a funding mechanism that we utilized for the roundabout at Cassau seventeen and Hafner Drive. Um, the city of Mapleton received a grant for the reconstruction of Borkers Street on the north side of the new high school, but we assisted them with their grant application, and we actually filled out like, um, I submitted two applications, I think county-wide between the townships and the small cities, we submitted six or seven for the last solicitation. Uh, so tremendously popular, helpful program. There was seventy-nine million dollars undesigned, six million dollars specifically for townships, a hundred and forty-six point four million for named projects, um, we're not using the word earmarks, but, uh, named projects. Um, and there was also an additional eighteen million dollars in undesigned cash in the transportation bill, so this is also another great thing for transportation around the state. Um, we'll be definitely looking at projects to apply for that funding for when, when that solicitation comes around. Additionally, the other one that we pushed really hard is local bridge. Additionally, the other one that we pushed really hard is local bridge replacement program. $67 million of undesigned money, another $41 million of named projects, and there was also an additional 18 million, again, in undesigned cash in the transportation bill. So that's a total of $85 million of undesigned dollars for bridge funding. So that should, would certainly anticipate, knock on wood, that our CASA 13 bridge would be included as well as potentially others that we have in the queue. We are going to move, now that we're confident that we'll see bridge funding, we're going to move another batch of bridges up. For design, typically speaking, we've got about four bridges in the queue at all times, ready to go or in design at least, so that they're on the list because that's what the legislature really used. There's a, there's a project ready for funding, meaning the plans are designed and approved and ready to go. And then there's projects in the development where we've submitted at least a funding application and will be getting designed. And that really is the litmus that we use to determine need. So we're going to continue to push more projects forward because as you look at our bridge replacement resolution, there's certainly need demonstrated. Highway rail grade crossings also received $3.6 million. Safe routes to school, 2.4 million, and Greater Minnesota Transit Capital, $3 million. There were numerous other policy items included, including revisions to quarters of commerce language, creating designations and pro-rated funding for kind of a ring approach for metro, metro connector and regional center projects. So the farther you get away from the metro is your designation. That was actually language proposed by Representative Torkelson. And I think it makes sense to me, you know, depending which area of the state you're from and how much money you want to get, but I think it kind of fairly distributes it around the state so that a regional center such as Blue Earth County can compete for its share of those monies and not have to go up against major metro projects. One that we've, we've had to push back against and we're concerned about is Transportation Greenhouse Gas Emission Impact Assessment. The language requires carbon reduction mitigation measures for specified projects that increase capacity or vehicle miles traveled. This language is very concerning for any future projects. It could include a corridor expansion, lane additions, interchanges, economic growth or that, you know, support economic growth and development. A steering committee was formed that does include two county engineers and two city engineers to try to write the policy and provide direction. However, the statutory language still is what it is, so we've got to work around that framework. The author did indicate he's willing to go back and look at it and try to make revisions. However, we tried to get some of those revisions done before it became law. I do have to thank Representative Brand was on the Transportation Joint Committee between the House and the Senate, and he did introduce language for safety projects. So I appreciate his efforts on that, as well as Senator Jazinski out of Fairbault for his efforts on listening to our concerns and trying to include language to help steer this to something that we can work within. We certainly are supportive of the concept of it. We just believe there were elements of the, of the law that needed further vetting, but we're hoping, hopeful that the steering committee can provide that insight. So there are two county engineer representatives. Again, I'm not on that. The Anoka County Engineer and Carver County Engineers are going to sit on that because they both have major projects that will be dramatically impacted by this language. So they're going to remain at the forefront of that issue. There was also technical assistance for federal transportation grants that was provided for both financial and technical assistance for IIJA grant applications. So that's a good step in the right direction. $40 million of IIJA discretionary state matches were funded. And a legislative report is to be prepared by November 1st, 2024, by the Commissioner of Transportation and OMB. Based on the current road funding gap and revenue options to meet said gap, this is an update to the 2020, I'm sorry, 2012 TFAC report that is still referenced quite a bit today. So I know Vance, you're probably familiar with reference to the TFAC. That's really the last time we had a gauge of how far behind transportation funding was. So it's really good that, you know, albeit 12 years later, we're going to get an update to that and really help us set and try to identify what would it take to make transportation funding?
Let's hope it doesn't take another 12 years.
No comment. We'll see. So the last item I had included in the board packet was Rapidan Dam memorandum update. Not a lot to report on. There was a lot of rainfall, obviously, as the board is aware, primarily over the Mother's Day weekend. The dam did peak at 17,400 cubic feet per second on May 17th. With this required us to issue high flow notifications protocol. Those were enacted on May 17th in accordance with responsibilities and duties detailed in the emergency action plan for the Rapidan Dam. The county utilized a local contractor to remove numerous trees that accumulated at the tainer gates. So they actually had an excavator on the dam deck with a skeleton bucket on it, pushing trees through. Very dangerous work, so we appreciate their diligent efforts. We did mobilize them more than once, beginning on May 16th, to ensure that we could have continued flow moving through the dam. And then obviously, as you have trees hung up there, they just catch more trees and the problem gets bigger and bigger. So we wanted to try to stay on top of it, keep things moving through the dam. So we, I watched them for a couple of hours work and very impressive, very skillful work. So appreciate all of those efforts. With that, I would entertain any questions that the board may have.
All right. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right. We'll go right to our county attorney, Pat.
Good morning, Pat.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Just a couple of items. You know, we, what's not in the report is our truancy filings are at an all time high now coming out of COVID that the school districts have been very, very succinct about wanting kids in school. So we, last I checked, we're at 120, which is a strain for the system, so to speak, for not only for the courts, but for probation in our office as well. We've been a little bit busy in some of the areas, and I think Bob can fill you in on some of those, and I know that he's been, a couple of the headaches he's been dealing with. But we have right now going on a three day tax court trial that one of the big box stores decided to hold off on all the other filings throughout the state and use Blue Earth County as the example. So that's been taking a substantial amount of time for the assessors and everybody involved for that. So if you have any questions on anything else, I'm more than happy to provide any answers if I can.
No, we appreciate it, and we appreciate what your office, I mean, obviously, we've, everybody knows what's been going on around Mankato and all the issues that have been happening. And of course, it all runs to the county attorney's office afterwards. So we appreciate all the work that you and your staff do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
And we are going to jump to administration, Bob.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May 23rd.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
I got a motion and a second on the bills. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 10 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Have one action item for the board's consideration today, and that's the approval of a revision to the employee handbook, specifically Section 7.1, which is the holiday provision. This would be a request to add Juneteenth to the list of paid holidays now that the legislature has deemed Juneteenth a state holiday effective in 2023.
I'll move approval?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to mention that we did discuss this at the work session the other day.
Yep.
I'll probably get to it. But seems like it's something that we should support and move forward with it.
Appreciate that.
I can also tell the board we have reached out to business agents of their respective unions that we work with and are working through memorandum of understandings with those groups as time permits.
All right. Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Under informational items, we have a list here for your review, starting with a lateral transfer of a child protection assessment worker to a men choices assessor in our human services department. And so we've initiated recruitment to fill that child protection assessment position. We also filled a senior account clerk billing position in human services, along with a children's mental health and chemical health case manager in human services. Then we have filled a couple of 911 telecommunicator positions in our sheriff's department. In our jail, we had a full-time correctional officer request to go to part-time, and so have made that change in employment status. And then item H is filling a correctional officer in the jail. And lastly, just the employment of a temporary 911 telecommunicator. This is an on-call position of a former 911 telecommunicator that's indicated willingness to help us out on occasion. Happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items? All right. Item number 11 in your packet then is the Joint Economic Development Service Agreement. This is the Regional Economic Development Alliance Agreement between a number of cities, couple counties, and greater Mankato growth. You heard from GMG representatives last week at the work session describing some of the work that Rita does in terms of economic development in the region. It really focuses on how do we collectively grow our economic development activities in the region because we all benefit from those activities? And so this is an agreement that we've had in place since 2009. It had reached a point in the previous agreements where it was expiring. So some work was done on some of the language to maybe put a little more focus on worker retention and recruitment. And then there was a committee that was put together to look at the funding formula for this particular agreement. As you're aware, that agreement came forward with some additional costs to the county that we requested some additional discussion on. And so further revisions were made, basically resulting in a per capita rate for the county that represents the population outside of cities with 1,000 or more population. So we basically take on the rural population as well as a couple of small cities. And so this will result in an increase in our dues, but that will be spread over six years. So recommending approval here if the board so agrees.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Motion and second. Any discussion?
A little bit of discussion, but it works out better and it works better for the colonies as far as what could have been.
This is another one of those that we had a, in our work session and have pretty long discussions on what happened. So it's not something that's just brought up and passed through. So any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 12 in your packet is a application for a temporary on sale liquor license by the Blue Earth County Fair Association. This is for their beer garden. And so this is something that you've seen annually, and we're again recommending approval.
So moved. Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And it passes.
That's all I have for Mr. Chair.
That's all you have. All right. Well, we will go to our commissioner reports on committees. Mark, you want to start us off today?
Sure. Let's see, May 24th. Yeah, I went to United Way Awards because the Partners for Housing was, two organizations signaled out for performance and for a longtime recipient of United Way. And then we did have a Partners for Housing meeting then on the 25th. And on the 30th, the county board, we had a work session. And June 1st, did have our Maple meeting, and we talked, we learned about this. Mindots on carbon reduction policy, which has a little bit of work, but we'll see how that all goes. June 2nd, did have the Simrex Recycling, and that was in Dodge Center. And that, yeah, there's a lot of legislative stuff and some good, some got to work through what happens. It's ever changing in the recycling field. It's interesting, to say the least. Then, and that included, you know, paths for revenue, and it's getting harder and harder. So we'll see how that goes. I think that was it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Keep.
Mr. Chair, since our last meeting, I had SECB statewide emergency communication board. We actually met in person in St. Cloud, managed to get up to that. Everything's going pretty well there. We're still working extremely hard on our 403 governance language. And at one point, I thought we had a committee put together that was going to bring us back some language to discuss. But in my opinion, we went backwards a little bit more and decided that we need to regroup and just kind of see what the whole entire statewide emergency communication board does, and then we can move forward with the 403 governance language. So I think it'll be good exercise for me. We've scheduled two in-person meetings in June and July. I'm hoping we can get it done in one. They started with three, so we're negotiating back and forth. But we just need to get through this language barrier we have, and I just think a couple good meetings, we can get through it. But it'll be interesting for me to kind of understand a little bit more about what the SECB does because I'm involved in several of the committees and just see how it all ties together and see the people in person will make it much easier. We had our work session, discussed, approved many of the things today we discussed at the work session. Then I had my legislative through the SECB meeting last Thursday, and then last night I was up at the Eagle Lake City Council meeting. And that is my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. We'll come over this side. Patty?
Mine's a little light. I did attend the AMC end of session call on May 24th. And then the community ed had their spirit of youth ceremony on the 24th that evening after the board meeting. And that was kind of fun to sit through and see all those people getting awards and recognition for doing things for kids. And May 30th was a work session. I did a couple of NACO calls. That's it.
Kevin?
Since the May 23rd board meeting, I also did the AMC legislative update, as well as the GMG legislative forum at South Central. Work session's been mentioned. And June, last couple of days, honoring Commissioner Nelson over in West Eagle, those events.
All right. All right. Mine is fairly light too, since the last board meeting. We had our county board work session on Thursday. I had a personnel committee meeting for Traverse De Sue Library. We're discussing how we're going to go about hiring a new director for Traverse De Sue. And then I had a NACO transportation committee meeting on that same day. And then I went, like a lot of us did, I went to Commissioner Nelson's funeral yesterday. And that's pretty light. Of course, the week before, I was in the WIR, the conference for the Western Interstate Region for NACO. And that's, that's all I had. And I guess that's probably the end of, you wanted to have a motion to recess?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I guess that's probably the end of, uh, you wanted to have a motion to recess? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.